...session on the Coronavirus Emergency Relief Fund that we have set up for tonight. Our panelists this evening are Councilwoman Letizia Fraga, Director of Human Services Melissa Urias, President of the Princeton Children's Fund Felicia Spitz. I'm Gary de Blasio, Director of Youth and Community Services, and Ross Wischnik, who is the Chair of the Human Services Commission. We will be doing about a 35-minute presentation to answer all the questions that we have received over the last week. And hopefully, the presentation will answer that. And then we will open up the evening to Q and A at the bottom of your screen. There'll be Q and A, and you can type those in. And we will move forward with our program now. So I'm going to turn the evening over to Felicia and Melissa. And also, as we do that, we're going to go stop video on the panelists. So we're not distracting the presentation. And then when the presentation's over, we'll make ourselves visible again. So Ross, if you can go blank on your video, that would be great. And Letizia, too. Oh, there we go. Okay, ready to go?
Okay, can everybody hear me? The panelists can hear you, for sure. Okay.
Yes.
Well, I want to start by saying thank you so much for joining us tonight. We are really thrilled to have the opportunity to talk to everyone and so happy that people actually wanted to hear what we're doing. I want to take a minute for gratitude and thank my board. On March 16th, after a virtual executive committee meeting, I sent them an email and presented the Coronavirus Emergency Relief Fund concept to them. And within a few hours, they unanimously agreed and have remained steadfast throughout the past 10 weeks. I also want to thank our partners in this process. First, our SERF team members: Princeton Human Services, Princeton Community Housing, Princeton Senior Resource Center, and Housing Initiatives of Princeton. Thanks also to our Housing Stability Coalition Partners, which is HIP again, Nassau Presbyterian, Princeton Alliance Church, St. Vincent de Paul, and Stone Hill Church. Probably more important and integral in this effort, thanks to the Intake Coordinators and Steering Committee, without whose tireless efforts, none of this would be possible. Those wonderful ladies are Cecilia Avila, Emily Becker, Zoe Deohanyo Pinel, Andrea Dynan, Jordan Goodwin, Sharon Hurley, Diane Paulcell, Nicole Pallucci, Trinidad Rodriguez, and Angie Vargas. Also, our intake coordinators Catherine Cardona, Kimberly Figaro Martinez, and Cindy Sandoval. I also want to express my most sincere gratitude to all 767 donors and grantors. Without your financial support, there would be no grant awards for any applicants. Last, but certainly not least, I want to thank Gary de Blasio for his leadership and support. While he is officially only Melissa's manager, he has extended help to me and Princeton Children's Fund as well. His wealth of social services experience have been a source of comfort for us all. I also want to acknowledge an important point. The entire steering committee, PCF trustees, and all of our outreach team and partner organizations volunteer their time. We do not pay anyone in this process, so donor dollars go straight to applicant awards. As a final point of information, we'll take all questions at the end. So please type your question into the Q and A function when we finish. We've received several questions about how we were able to so quickly launch the SERF and why Princeton Children's Fund was suited to lead a multi-organization volunteer relief effort during a pandemic. So we thought it'd be helpful to start tonight with the origin story. For those of you who knew Princeton Children's Fund before the pandemic, you know that our mission is to provide access to enrichment and extracurricular opportunities for Princeton Public School students whose families would otherwise be unable to afford them. Our goal is to promote an equivalent experience for all students in the Princeton Public School community. We're striving for equity in the K-12 education experience. We offer summer and after-school programs to address equity. We do this in partnership with the Princeton Public Schools and Princeton Charter School and organizations like the Princeton Public Library, Princeton Recreation Department, Princeton Human Services, the Princeton Family YMCA, and the Arts Council of Princeton. Over the years, we partner organizations, have pooled resources to support as many students as possible. We've worked to ensure that our efforts on behalf of eligible students were complementary and that we collectively served as many as possible. PCF offered our own programs, too. And last summer, with coordination support from Princeton Education Foundation, we ran several middle and high school programs. In typical PCF fashion, we collaborated and offered these programs with our partners. The Princeton Public Library hosted "The Book You Get" and "Test Prep." Mr. Burr at John Witherspoon Middle School hosted "Mission to Mars." And Ms. Baxter of Princeton High School hosted "Up and Out." This year, right before COVID-19 came to town, we had just launched an after-school club called Crazy Universe in partnership with Dr. Leah Mederos of the Institute for Advanced Study and the Princeton Public Library. In addition to canceling Crazy Universe and moving Test Prep to a virtual format, we faced some new challenges. Mainly, how do we continue working to advance equity in Princeton in a time of coronavirus? Well, we went back to basics and thought about what we do best. And then we reached out to partners and had a few conversations. In speaking with our partners at Send Hunger Packing Princeton, we realized that we were simultaneously thinking about the same problem. We knew that any support the government would provide would not help everyone equally. So we identified the equity opportunity. We could catch the people and families that fall through the government's safety nets and help them weather this difficult time. We identified two main areas of concern: shelter and food. We reached out to other community partners to see who would be interested and able to help. By March 17th, PCF had organized a team, and we launched the Coronavirus Emergency Relief Fund to address the shelter concern. Our plan enabled each organization to participate as needed and as wanted with one another. We issued a press release and announced SERF to Princeton. Send Hunger Packing went on to address the food concern with our friends at Arm and Arm and the Princeton Public Schools and other groups. I was asked how we were chosen by the municipality, and I want to address that point here, too. We chose Princeton. Princeton didn't choose us. That said, we did make our intentions known. When we were in early conversations with our community partners that first week of March, we decided it would be prudent to reach out to the mayor and superintendent of schools and let them know our plans and find out what they were thinking. We continued to have discussions with them and all of our partners as we traveled this strange new path. To clarify any remaining confusion, Princeton Children's Fund is the sole financial agent and founder of SERF. We're an independent 501(c)(3) incorporated in the state of New Jersey in 2016. We're governed by a Board of Trustees who provide oversight of our activities. We are not a municipal or school entity and have not been controlled by the municipality or the schools in any way, either prior to or during the pandemic. Melissa, maybe you want to talk a little bit about all that unites our intrepid group?
What galvanized the SERF and directed the focus is our ethos. It's about keeping our community intact and together, keeping people sheltered and connected. For students, that connection is to school, their friends, and teachers. For people in general, the connection is to community resources and other necessities. There is rarely a "one size fits all" that actually fits all, which we knew in the beginning. We wanted to take a holistic approach and allow each applicant to self-assess their need. We created a system where applicants can let us know what help would be most appreciated for them. It can change as time passes and their needs change. We are working now to ensure our approach is flexible enough to accommodate phased returns to work and transitions from part-time to full-time reemployment.
So how do you structure a holistic applicant-focused relief effort in the middle of a pandemic? I believe you leverage what and who you already know. We organize SERF like any other PCF program. We identified what each organization did well and then designed a system that leveraged the best from all of us and used existing processes when available. Princeton Human Services offered their privacy-compliant online application system to support the intake process and provided a sample application from a prior initiative that was used as the basis of the SERF application. They, the Princeton Recreation Department and Corner House, additionally contribute staff to answer the phones, assist with application submission, and serve as a central source for document collection. Their amazing director, Melissa Urias, in partnership with me, oversee the steering committee's twice-weekly determination calls, and we co-present cases to the Housing Stability Coalition once weekly. Princeton Community Housing and Princeton Senior Resource Center have social services professionals who volunteer on the steering committee and process applications. They have also provided tremendous outreach support and distributed flyers to residents. They have a unique knowledge of their clients and the housing available in Princeton and bring that depth to the team. On March 31st, Housing Initiatives of Princeton joined the effort, and they process applications that do not meet the eligibility criteria for SERF. Princeton Children's Fund is the financial agent and in that capacity is responsible for fundraising, donor acknowledgements, grant request applications, landlord negotiations and payments, and utility service payments on behalf of approved applicants. Several members of the steering committee are trustees or friends of PCF. In addition, PCF has created the outreach materials, website, flyers, templates for applicant communication, et cetera. We provided translations of same, and we provide community updates through a now-weekly newsletter. So I get a lot of questions about our community partner model, and it's easiest to explain with this equation. I don't know if there are any mathematicians out there who want to take a crack at this one. The community partner model is a collaboration model first and foremost. When we started in 2016, we wanted to help as many students as possible, but we were brand-new and didn't have limitless resources. We knew that other organizations in town also wanted to help students, and they, like us, didn't have unlimited funds either. They were also trying to identify which students were most in need of a grant and provide their own financial aid awards that reflected the applicant's financial ability to pay. So we came up with this interesting idea. All of the students PCF serve hail from families who have applied for free or reduced lunch. If we pool our resources, focus them on this group, and involve all interested partners, we can serve a much larger group of students together. And it will be much more efficient as we can use the federal guidelines as a uniform financial aid first review. It's important to provide an infrastructure that lets people transcend poverty at their own pace and gives them opportunities along the way to get a win. The community partner model also includes a family co-pay. We ask families for a contribution toward the overall funding, and it empowers them as a partner in the solution for their children. I'm going to solve this equation now. The equation is actually the family co-pay for camp, the partner contributions for camp, and the partner contributions for lunch for two sessions of day camp at the rec department last year. So all of those people together provide support for the one child. The school coordinator model is similar in that it's based on the premise that there is already in existence the group of people in our schools who want to help all children succeed. It's loosely based on a concept that underpins the Mr. Rogers quote, "Look for the helpers." We looked for the helpers. Curious thing here is that the helpers didn't have as many ways to help as they wanted. We can give them the opportunity to exercise that helper value and also provide some of the ways they can help. We have zero paid employees at any school, and yet we have participation with 100% of our schools because we found the helpers. So why did I explain these two obviously PCF models in a SERF program? It's because we use the community partner model to set up the funding process for applicant awards and the school coordinator model to create the steering committee structure. In a SERF environment, the family co-pay is the amount the applicants contribute. In the case of landlords, we assumed that they wanted to help their tenants, but they didn't have all of the resources, and we were right. The landlords and the Housing Stability Coalition each contribute what they can to the rent, and then SERF pays the remaining rent expense and the utility and other expenses. The steering committee is comprised of all the helpers, the lovely people in our community who want to help and were looking for a way to do that.
The SERF also uses the Princeton Housing Stability Coalition model, which is another collaboration model. In 2016, Princeton Human Services created the Housing Stability Coalition, which is a group of organizations in the greater Princeton area whose goal is to prevent homelessness in Princeton. The participating organizations include Arm and Arm, Homefront, Housing Initiatives of Princeton, Nassau Presbyterian Church, Princeton Alliance Church, St. Vincent de Paul, and Stone Hill Church. Prior to the creation of the Coalition, there was an uncoordinated system in place for residents in need of housing expense assistance to seek services. What we found was that if a resident went to an organization for assistance but did not meet their criteria, they were then given a list of other organizations that could possibly assist them. Many times, it would take them a full day of phone calls and office visits to finally find an organization that they met criteria for. The creation of the Housing Stability Coalition not only formed a coordinated system through a universal application, but also improved the communication between providers to share resources and knowledge on cases. The universal application was created by the Coalition to streamline the intake process so an applicant could complete the application with any of the participating providers, even if they may not qualify for their direct services. The universal application is then shared via email with the participating providers for a collaborative funding effort. Now let's talk about the eligibility and criteria for the SERF. These follow a similar template of the Housing Stability Coalition. First, applicants must reside in Princeton or attend Princeton Public Schools. Second, the expense and loss of income must have occurred after March 9th and is due to the pandemic. We use March 9th as a start of the pandemic for the purposes of SERF. Third, the household income must fall below the 2019 Council on Affordable Housing, also known as COA, limits before and after March 9th. The COA limits are the limits used for eligibility for qualifying for affordable housing in New Jersey. Fourth, applicants must have applied for other available options, including but not limited to unemployment insurance benefits, TANF, also known as Temporary Assistance for Needied Families, GA or General Assistance, LIHEP or Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, and employer-sponsored COVID funds. I do want to note that this criteria was updated to reflect the backlog of unemployment benefits at the state level. We updated our eligibility to be able to still consider applicants who are receiving unemployment, although most recently, we have denied assistance for individuals receiving both unemployment plus the additional 600 federal subsidy. I also want to emphasize that if an applicant has not applied to one of these public assistance programs through Human Services, we assist them with either the referral or assume the case entirely and help them apply to ensure that they are seeking more sustainable benefits. Fifth, the applicant must provide identification and supporting documents for the above. These include identification, copy of bills or lease if they're requesting rent, and this is the most important as we cannot make payments without an account number and balance. We also request proof of loss of income, proof of unemployment insurance benefits, and three months of bank statements. When working with economically disadvantaged individuals, it is important to understand that each case and situation is different. Therefore, depending on a person's situation, we will waive certain supporting documentation. If a person does not have all of the components of the supporting documentation, we created a process that allows us, through the intake interview, to document the aspect of a person's financial situation. For example, for a person who does not have a bank account, the case managers have a conversation with the applicant that asks questions about their employment, such as how many hours are worked, how often, et cetera. Another common example is the verification of loss of employment due to the pandemic. If clients are unable to obtain a letter from their employer or the employer has refused, the case managers can do the research, such as going online and seeing that a restaurant has in fact closed. Or if a person does not receive pay stubs, we can determine their income through bank statements. This is a picture of our SERF steering committee from today's meeting. And Felicia has already stated all of our participating SERF members. During the founding of the SERF, it was important that a team of trusted individuals from partner organizations be included to help provide comfort and reassurance with the community. These individuals are already working with economically disadvantaged residents and were able to refer them to the fund. We also acknowledge the need for Spanish-speaking representatives, which is why 10 out of 13 of our committee members are Spanish-speaking. As the SERF is a collaboration between partners, it's important to distinguish the roles and responsibilities of the SERF helpers. The role of the intake coordinators is to continue the goal of human services, which is connecting residents to services and resources that will better help their situation. Our intake coordinators provide general applicant communication and support, conduct application intakes in both English and Spanish over the phone, and assist with the privacy-compliant web intake system of the municipality. Our intake coordinators also help with applying to other public assistance benefits programs outside of the SERF. The role of the steering committee is to provide the social services aspect, which includes case management, assistance with the collection of documentation, and they also contribute to case determinations. The role of the Princeton Children's Fund as the fiscal agent is to conduct landlord and utility communication, manage the fundraising and finances, provide the Zoom platform for steering and Housing Stability Coalition calls, and provide community updates. We also have the support of community liaisons, such as the Princeton Mutual Aid Network, who are assisting residents without access to a computer, complete applications over the phone. It is important that we all be a part of the solution, no matter how small the contribution to the work.
So this is our process. You can take a minute to look at the whole schematic, and then I'm going to explain some of the critical steps and phases individually. Most of the questions and comments we receive are about the process and why it takes one to two weeks to fund an application. The short answer is because that's how long it takes to administer a relief effort of this magnitude correctly and responsibly in an environment of social distancing and virtual work. We've raised over $400,000, and it's also extremely important to me personally that I'm able to answer exactly where every penny went should a donor or grantor inquire. We're often asked about denials, and the majority of denials happen primarily in the first phase. Melissa will speak more about these later, but I want to note that if an applicant is denied during the first phase of the process, they're notified within one to two days. And if eligible, they're forwarded to the Housing Stability Coalition for funding outside of SERF. Phase 1 denials occur when the applicant is not a resident of Princeton, the loss is not COVID-related, or their income before, after March 9th or outside the COA limits for Region 4. Barring one of those circumstances, the application is forwarded to a case manager or put on fast track. From application to case manager can take anywhere between a few hours to four days, depending on the day of the week the application is submitted. We have steering committee calls on Monday and Thursday, and that's when cases are officially assigned. I will tell you that our steering committee is very competitive, though, and they often look at the intake spreadsheet and assign themselves cases between calls. The case manager phase is really where the magic happens. They conduct the intake interview, collect any missing documents, or collect information from the applicant to create the documentation. The case managers also find out who the landlord is and provide contact information to PCF for follow-up. I contact each landlord, explain who we are, what we're doing, and ask if they can share in this with us. Most landlords want to share, and this is one area where my faith in humanity has been bolstered during this pandemic. The landlords, even if they're unable to share, are overwhelmingly concerned about their tenants. They have all passed the flyers along to their tenants. They've provided the information we need to process payments quickly. They have been instrumental in issuing refunds when needed. I've heard some of the sweetest stories about efforts that landlords have made to let tenants know they care. One landlord went to do a repair and was trying to make the mask less frightening for the small children who live at one of his properties. So he put on a Santa hat and beard, and then the mask. The kid's got a real kick out of seeing Santa and April working on a washing machine. After the case managers finalize the cases, the steering committee makes their determination. Rarely, cases are denied at this time, but it can happen. A denial at this point results in a referral to another program. Human Services provides support and sometimes assumes full responsibility of the application, as in the case of general assistance claims. Melissa will speak more about this later. For cases that are approved by the steering committee, Melissa and I present the cases to the Housing Stability Coalition. The Coalition partners with us on some of the applicant rent payments. Once the Housing Stability Coalition call is over, we begin utility payments. While we're paying bills, the Housing Stability members are getting their checks cut. The Housing Stability Coalition committee members mail the checks to Princeton Children's Fund. Once we receive those checks, I drive the landlord cover letters, pre-addressed and stamped envelopes, and the Housing Stability Coalition checks to my treasurer's house. Or sometimes, because she's an angel, she drives over to my house and picks them up. And then she cuts the PCF check and gets them into the mail. All checks are scanned and logged, so we're able to answer questions that might arise. I also copy all of the utility payment confirmation numbers, dates, and amounts onto the respective landlord letters and merge them into the application. Once the cases are complete, Human Services mails hard copies to the applicants so they have a record of the transactions down the road should any questions arise. This is one area in our process where delays can occur. For example, the USPS has been slower than normal. What would have taken one day in January to mail locally within Princeton sometimes takes three days now. There are some Housing Stability Coalition members who don't process checks the same day of the call. So those checks might not arrive until Saturday or Monday. That's five or six days later and completely out of our control.
Moving on to the communication process. During a crisis such as this pandemic, our anxieties and worries are heightened. Therefore, we have emphasized our communication methods with clients to help relieve the anxiety during the process. The applicant outreach communication is highlighted in blue on this slide. I want to start off by noting that we are currently living in a crisis that has forced us all to adapt. Our application is currently online and over the phone in order to comply with social distancing practices. When an applicant submits an online application, they will receive an autoresponder that lets them know that the intake was completed and submitted. When an applicant completes an application over the phone, the intake coordinator will walk them through the process. If a person is denied for any of the initial three requirements that were previously mentioned through Human Services, I email, mail, or text a copy of the denial letter. If an intake moves forward, they receive the initial application submission form, and then the case manager reaches out to them via WhatsApp, text, call, or email. Once all of the documentation has been received, they then send them the "What Happens Next" picture. Once the application has been approved, I text them a copy of the approval letter. During the period between the "What Happens Next" picture and the approval letter, our intake coordinators also send friendly reminders to all open cases. Felicia will go over these text messages in detail later on. Our office then mails a hard copy of the letter and other documents to the applicant. As the Princeton Children's Fund pays utilities and other bills, the applicant also receives text confirmations from the companies of the payment. For renewal applications, our intake coordinators reach out to former applicants around the 20th of the month to see if they are in need of assistance for the month to come and complete the renewal application over the phone. The communication follows the same process I just detailed. The pandemic presents new challenges that, as a community, we have been forced to adapt to. One of the ways that we are adapting in this new terrain is our method of communication with the community, most notably with the recent use of WhatsApp. WhatsApp is a very common method of communication among our community, which is why we created a Human Services WhatsApp where residents can text questions or concerns about their application. Typically, text messages can be more anxiety-relieving than a phone call. The communication part during this pandemic has been a challenge, which I'm sure many other agencies can agree with. We are constantly going through an informal process of quality improvement to make our process as user-friendly as possible.
So Melissa showed you the bird's-eye view of the applicant communication process, and I'm going to show you several of the actual communication pieces so you can see what the process looks like from the applicant's side. It starts with the fly- It starts with the flyers and we sent out a lot of flyers. In addition to this list and the weekly outreach emails, which have now become newsletters to the entire community, we also ask applicants to let their friends know about us directly. Melissa and I both produced outreach videos that were posted on social media to help get the word out to potential applicants who may struggle with literacy. I'm certain we've killed trees and I feel really bad about that, but we received a significant amount of pressure to get more flyers out. We have literally distributed thousands of flyers between the neighborhood captains, our school coordinators, the community liaisons, the landlords. We included a toiletries gift pack in a recent food delivery from the Princeton Public Schools and each of those 525 toiletry packs included a flyer that my board member Lenora Keel put in there one at a time, bless her heart. Princeton Community Village and Griggs residents also received a flyer. Witherspring Jackson residents also received a flyer. The Free Store or the Shop Shop or Mr. Rogers Neighborhood Store, whatever you call it, they also distributed flyers and of course, social media. So, we also have an outreach committee that has been helping us reach out to their communities. All of these wonderful people have done just that. They've emailed or posted flyers or distributed flyers and done this for us while managing their own organizations during a pandemic. After a potential applicant receives the flyer, they access the application. The cover letters pictured here were an update to the initial process. The first two weeks, we received a lot of applications that did not meet the eligibility criteria. Melissa and I talk daily and informally review the process multiple times a week. The steering committee calls also inform us of issues or difficulties that are being introduced as time goes on and that we can address. It was clear to us both that some additional clarification around eligibility was needed. The application is where we've received a lot of questions regarding the type of information and documentation we request. The application is based on the Housing Stability Coalition Universal Application and since it has worked so successfully for four years for this group, we decided to use a modified version of it here too. It's been tested over time, it works for all of the organizations involved, and since we're unable to do in-person interviews and intakes, this application has been very helpful. We did shorten the renewal application to reduce the duplication information burden on the applicant, but this inadvertently created a perception that the process was also shortened, which it's not. The utility bills are not always the same and sometimes a renewal application can take longer than the initial application because of that. The status as a renewal also does not change the process with Housing Stability Coalition and mailing the checks. Once an application is submitted, there are two somewhat immediate responses. The first response is an autoresponder from the online system. It lets applicants know that they successfully submitted. We then send out via text a "What Happens Now" picture. We received feedback that our "What Happens Now" wasn't great, so we even created a custom version for one of the community advocates. We've also incorporated WhatsApp at Princeton Human Services as Melissa mentioned. We have canned messages that go out once weekly to open cases. They're pictured on this slide as well. Once a case has received a determination, we have determination notices that Melissa will tell you about.
Determination notices, whether approved, denied, or referred, are all sent from Human Services. The notices are first discussed between the case manager and applicant, then sent via WhatsApp, email, or mail. The approval notices include how much will be paid, for which month, and to who. The denial and referral notices include the reason along with the organization that they have been referred to. When possible, we notify the organization so that they are aware that the client has been referred to their organization for assistance.
So what happens after approvals and determinations? Well, we renew this. I bring out the parts of the original process that are not relevant to the renewal process and I think you can see the parts of the process that are eliminated in a renewal situation are not parts of the process that were time-intensive. So the timeline for renewal is roughly the same as for an initial case.
Because of the nature of the work and the population we are serving, we put client's privacy and confidentiality first and foremost. We have many licensed social workers on the steering committee, myself included. The SERF abides by social work code of ethics that protects a client's right to privacy and confidentiality. Therefore, the SERF can neither confirm nor deny any individual's participation in the program except as provided for in the disclosure agreement. This also includes any and all information related to the specific case. If community liaisons, advocates, or helpers have questions or concerns regarding a client's case, it is important that they refer applicants directly to the assigned case manager or Human Services to not only protect their confidentiality, but also prevent confusion of communication. All applicants sign a disclosure agreement, giving permission for case information to be shared between service organizations and co-funders involved with the SERF, which include Princeton Human Services, Princeton Children's Fund, Princeton Senior Resource Center, Princeton Housing Authority, Princeton Community Housing, St. Vincent de Paul, Homefront, Arm and Arm, Housing Initiatives of Princeton, Nassau Presbyterian Church, Princeton Alliance Church, Stone Hill Church, utility companies, and landlords.
And what was likely the biggest surprise to me, the fundraising turned out to be one of the easier parts of all this. Many, many thanks to Princeton University and Princeton Area Community Foundation for their support of our efforts. Both of these organizations lead with their values and when they say that they want to help, they mean this from the heart. Their faith in our work reinforces our commitment and inspires us to continue to bring our best every day. As I mentioned before, we've raised over $400,000. We are watching every penny of those donations. I can tell you that of the $403,969.59 raised, $306,203.60 has come via check or ACH transfer, which is great because that means we've only paid $2,864.70 in fees to PayPal, DonorUp, and WePay. One of the reasons it takes so long to pay the utility bills is because we're trying to avoid unnecessary transaction fees. So we need operator support to make payments. The operator has to call out to each person and get their permission for Princeton Children's Fund to pay the bill. This takes time. Sometimes applicants are concerned when they see the utility company name come up on their phone so they don't pick up. Or they pick up and hang up, sometimes three or four times, like happened yesterday. But fees add up and if we made the payments the easy way, it would have cost over $312 for just fees on the PSENG bills. I don't think 186 approvals in 10 weeks really tells the whole story, nor does a number like $130,154. I can tell you that there have been 301 utility and other non-rent transactions made on behalf of applicants. The most frequently paid utility is PSENG, 79 times to be exact, with New Jersey American Water in second place. Princeton Children's Fund has cut 165 checks to landlords and the Housing Stability Coalition has cut another 52 checks. That's a grand total of 518 transactions behind the 186 approvals. The average time it takes to process a transaction is 7 minutes and 23 seconds. I know this because I entertain myself with math problems while I'm on hold for hours each week paying bills. We're frequently asked how long we can continue and that's a really difficult question to answer for a few reasons. One, the average award has been a moving target. April 7, which was our second Housing Stability Coalition call, but our first funding partnership, we had 12 applications that week and the average award was $517.56. This week, which was short with the holiday, we had only 22 applications for the Coalition and the average award was $932.14. Our peak was the week of May 19 with 27 approvals and an average award for the week of The average award across the entire effort remained stable this week for the first time. If we assume an average award around $925 per applicant, with our remaining funding, we can help another 296 people or times and we estimate that duration to be somewhere between seven and 11 weeks. While the average award has been increasing, it was expected. We thought that there were going to be multiple waves of people who would apply and the financial situations of those waves would be unique and that has been exactly what we've observed. The duration is difficult because there are some people who paid their bills across the year. So they worked two jobs and they saved income from the one job and lived off that during the leaner months in the winter. We are concerned that there's going to be a group of people who even though in the best of scenarios, things get back to normal, they're going to be hit again in January when that savings that didn't get built up to the same level this year runs out for next year.
Let's now discuss the breakdown of applications and the determinations. As of today, we have received a total of 286 applications. Of those 286, 186 applications have been approved, 35 have been denied or referred, 55 are currently open, and six have been closed due to no reply from the client. For clients who are not responsive, the case managers reach out at least three separate times. If after three times there's still no response, the case will be closed. However, an applicant's case can be reopened if they reach back out for assistance. As outreach and knowledge of the fund has increased and circumstances of our community has changed, our numbers of weekly intakes have increased significantly. During the first five weeks, we averaged 15 applications per week. During the last five weeks, we averaged 40 applications per week. During the total 10 weeks, we have averaged 27 applications per week. One thing to note that I previously mentioned is that around the 15th to 20th of the month, our intake coordinators reach out to all of the former applicants to see if they are in need of assistance for the month to come. If so, the intake coordinators complete intakes over the phone. You can see on the chart where the outreach of the intake coordinators are conducted by the spikes in intakes. When the SERF was first founded, there was an initial lack of clarity on who was eligible. Once the detailed application cover letter was introduced, clients were able to better understand whether or not they were eligible. Let's now discuss denial and referrals. For denials and referrals, 10 applicants have been denied for not being Princeton residents. Six applicants have been denied because their loss of income and expenses occurred before the pandemic. These cases are referred to the Housing Stability Coalition. I notify the client of the referral and the case is transferred to the Housing Stability Coalition for a case determination. 18 cases have been closed because other options have been available. These are cases where applicants have begun receiving unemployment benefits plus the additional weekly 600 federal subsidy, which most recently, most eligible applicants have begun receiving. In these cases, applicants may be better off now than they previously were. These cases may also be self-withdrawn if applicants return to work full-time. There have also been cases that have been eligible for general assistance formerly known as welfare. As the municipal welfare agency for Princeton, I am able to transfer the cases directly under Human Services and open the cases through my office. This NJ State General Assistance Program is a more sustainable public assistance program that offers additional benefits and services for clients. Through this process, I have been able to open an additional four cases on general assistance where typically I only open four cases in the course of six to eight months. There was one intake that was denied because the income before and after the pandemic exceeded the COA limit. I also want to emphasize the difference in denials. For applicants denied for not being a Princeton resident or exceeding COA limits, unfortunately, we cannot reconsider these cases. However, applicants that are initially denied for the expenses that were requested not being COVID-related or having other available options can be reconsidered. We understand that an individual's circumstances may change month to month, especially during these uncertain times. On our denial/ referral letters, we inform the applicants that if their circumstances changes, to please reach out to have their case reevaluated. As social workers and case managers, we make sure that applicants are connected to resources if they cannot be helped through the SERF.
Well, I think that concludes the information part of our session tonight. So we are going to open up for questions and again, I just want to remind you, if you have a question, please type it into the Q&amp;A box.
And actually, Felicia, I wanted to be able to say a few words.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's because I actually, I have been asked to be in charge of posting the questions that are being asked in the Q&amp;A. So what I want to say first of all, thank you to the panelists. Thank you for a wonderful presentation. And also thank you to all the community partners who were part of of this program, of setting up this program. I know many of the questions involved about what the municipality's role was in this and who made the decision as to who was going to be in charge. And I just wanted to clarify that this was an urgent situation. Council was not meeting because of the pandemic, you know, when the pandemic first hit, we were not prepared to meet virtually as we are now. And so this was not something that came before council, there was no council action taken. And it was correct when it was presented earlier on that this is not a municipal program. However, the municipality is a partner in this and I would even say that the municipal Human Services Department has a very significant role in this. So that's why when we were still, when we first started receiving questions from the community and wanting to know what the process was, what the protocols were that were being used. Initially, we were going to address them in the agenda of the Human Services Commission meeting, but understanding that this was going to take more time that we could allot in the agenda, it was decided that it was best to do it in this format as an info session. And we have received questions, perhaps because some of them did come via email and I know that you addressed the majority of them in your presentation, but there were some that perhaps need clarification. So unless...
I just want to, can I just say one thing because it was one of the questions that people asked if we're going to make the questions visible to all participants and we're not. We're just going to keep the questions to the panelists.
No, actually, if I can clarify that, because I did reach out to Mark before this because I want to make sure that this is a very open and transparent process. We don't want anyone feeling that we are not responding to their questions and that they're not going to know what other questions were asked, especially if perhaps they have a question themselves that somebody else made. So what was decided, this presentation is being recorded and it's going to be made available. And when it's made available, the questions that were asked or that were posed are also going to be made available. So in case we can't get to all of them tonight, you will be able, everyone who's interested will be able to see what questions were posed. And as Felicia indicated early on, some of our attendees are joining in by phone, so their names may not be visible, just the phone number. So if you have a question, please, when you ask your question, identify yourself so that we can so we'll know who's asking the question. So one of them, and some of them you may not have answers to. And if you don't... And if you don't, don't feel pressured to answer as, but perhaps if it's something that it can either be researched or clarified later on, you know, there will be an opportunity for that. So I think one of them I already answered was why there was no formal discussion or vote to establish this fund, including with the Princeton Human Services Commissioners or Council Liaison. I'm the Council Liaison to Human Services. And like I said before, you know, because of the pandemic, we were not meeting, and there was no opportunity to, to meet and, and vote and, and make any decisions on this. And, but the mayor was involved because in emergency situations such as this, the mayor does have the power to, to make decisions, including whether Human Services was going to take a role in this. So another question, I don't know if, if it's already being considered, but the question was whether there's a memorandum of understanding with the purpose and mission of SURF. And this would mean a memorandum of understanding between, I understand, Princeton Children's Fund and the other, the other partners and the municipality.
So Princeton Children's Fund, I know that we live in a very litigious society these days, but we have managed for four years to partner with people from our hearts. That's based on intention and a joint mission to serve. So we have never had a memo of understanding where it governed anything. I think also, Melissa, you probably can speak more to this, the Housing Stability Coalition model, which much of this is based on, for the past four years, has also not had a memo of understanding. So it, it seemed a little kind of out of left field to us to start behaving in a way that we haven't behaved in the past.
And I think the question that was raised was because of the municipality's role in it. So can we just say that's something that is maybe discussed? Not, or are you saying that, you know, are we saying that it's not going to be considered?
Well, it strikes me a little bit like a prenuptial after the honeymoon, right? So we've been doing this for 10 weeks. In the case of the Housing Stability Coalition, it's been four years. So it seems an odd point in the middle of a pandemic where we're all working, you know, 15, 16-hour days, seven days a week to start drafting memos of understanding. I don't feel we have any problems with any of our partners. I mean, if there's, I might be missing something, and if that's the case.
So I'm going to do, I'm going to use one of Mayor's Leopards lines, which I like. Let's put a pin on that, because there are many questions. And not to say, you know, that it's been, that we're leaving it at that, but, but because there are many questions that are being posed, and we're trying, going to try to get to as many of them as we can. So because of the previous question, the other question, I understand there's a steering committee who, who meets and discusses and makes the decisions. And I don't know if this would even happen, but the question that was posed is what happens when there's a disagreement? Who makes the decisions on how to move forward?
So it's, it's a democratic governing body, which I know we don't get to see a lot of these days nationally, but we have a system on Zoom where we do thumbs up or thumbs down, and we vote. So when there are questions that either somebody's not comfortable or it's just something new that we haven't had before, we take a vote, and the group as a body decides.
Okay. But if, very rarely, we have to take a vote. Most, they're very straightforward.
So for this, so, I mean, this is my own question, because that may come up too. So if for a steering committee, if, if that situation were to come up, then do you have something in writing for your committee as to what the process will be if, let's say, you were not on the same page on something?
Yeah, so we present the question, and we take a vote on it. And when there have been, there are not even disagreements, but when there's been like a change or an addition to the process that we're going to implement moving forward, I have this running minutes document. And I don't think the steering committee knows this, but I secretly take pictures of them. And I post the picture, so who was there? And I type like, today we, we added something. And I wrote, you know, a 52820 steering call and the two points that we discussed today for the first time. As people are going back to work, so I can tell you what that was about. We, we all understand that in kind of relief efforts like this, there isn't going to be one day when you can't pay anything and the next day where you can pay everything. So we're trying to create a really kind of human understanding process that's going to enable people to get back to their full income with some support. So they're not going to completely lose support because they start working, you know, three days a week. Because we can understand that's still not five days a week. So we were talking about how we were going to manage that as a steering committee. So I took my screen capture and I put those notes in this like ongoing minutes document that I keep.
You have 12 questions in the Q and A.
Yeah, I see that. So let me try to get to those. And if there's time, I will get to the other ones that were mailed in. But if there's not enough time to get to all of them, perhaps there will be an opportunity to respond to all the questions.
Sure. And most of the mailed-in questions were answered by the presentation. But let's go to the Q and A ones. There's 13 there now.
Yes. So in the Q and A, and I will try to go in order, is that there was, in the presentation, there was someone's interested on the history of the Princeton Children's Fund and, and who founded the Princeton Children's Fund?
So Princeton Children's Fund was, in many ways, it came before me. We moved to Princeton in 2015. And there were a group of, I don't know, let's call it 30 or 40 people in town who'd been meeting for several years about the idea of Princeton Children's Fund. Princeton Children's Fund was initially based on the, the COCO Fund model that is the elementary scholarship fund at Johnson Park School. So what happened when students left Johnson Park was that they lost all of that support. So they went off to middle school, which is a really big transition, and they lost all that. And also, all the other schools didn't have the same level of funding for their programs. So there had been this group of 30 or so people that for years had met and spoken about this. But nobody could really figure out how to get it off the ground. There was a lot of discussion about connecting it to other agencies. So it's, it's not unusual to have two people, two nonprofits that work in the same area but do something slightly different to share their 501(c)(3). So there had been some efforts to get a sharing arrangement together like that. And we moved here, and I was invited to one of those by Liliana Mornea, who I think many, many people in town know, because she's just super involved everywhere.
You may not recall me, but I was at that same meeting.
There. Okay. So then you know the answer to this question.
I know the answer, but this was a question that was asked by the public.
Okay.
And actually, I apologize for interrupting you.
Yeah, as a moderator, yeah, I'm just going to try to move the, the questions along because we now have 14.
So I was, I was going to suggest the same, Gary, that, you know, not to hurry you, but if we can try to keep them as short as possible because there are other questions.
And let's, let's try to keep the questions pertaining to the SURF process tonight. I think that's what's important, and there's enough, there's 14 of them here.
Okay. So the next question is, what are the SURF's goals in terms of the number of households that will be assisted? And what do you, what, you know, I'm going to rephrase it a little bit. Is what, as far as the application turnaround and processing time, do you have a goal in mind? Or is, or do you feel that what you're already doing is, is fast, is a quick turnaround time?
So I feel like we are flying at light speed. And I think that from the outside, if you don't understand all of the steps that are necessary to support applicants through SURF, it might seem like there's a lag. And I tried to explain that in the process slide where I explained, you know, from the Tuesday Housing Stability Call until we get their check here at PCF, it can sometimes be five or six days. We had, the post office was really slow two weeks ago, so it took seven or eight days. We can't control any of that. So we feel like we're flying and we're doing as much as we possibly can, and we're going to continue to work at this pace.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Melissa.
Yes, I also want to add that a lot of, as Felicia mentioned in the presentation, a lot of the requests are for utility payments. And when we receive intakes, a lot of the applicants have not yet received their utility bill. So a lot of the waiting time is just waiting for the utility bill to come in so that we know how much needs to be paid for that debt.
Okay. Thank you. So another question that was asked, can you provide, if you're not already doing this, would you be able to provide a demographic profile of who is receiving the funds by age, racial breakdown, immigration status? And do you think that what you're providing matches our most needy population in the community?
Melissa, can you take that one?
Yeah. So for the racial breakdown, that is an optional question that many applicants do not respond to. So we don't have sufficient data in order to be able to provide that. In terms of age, we should be able to provide that. And it's very difficult to match it to what we believe is our needy population. As many of you know, the statistics in Princeton are not, are not very accurate, especially when it comes to our undocumented community. So it is a little difficult to match it.
Okay. I'm going to address a question that has been repeated about the questions that are being asked. They will be made available along with the recording of this presentation. It's just that the format that we're using, which is panel-type discussion, it's not like a chat function where questions for everybody to see and share with each other. In the Q and A function, the same that we use in council, it's only available to us. And, but it will, the questions will be made available so that you'll be able to, to see what other questions were being posed. So another question that was asked is, why has the number of first-time applicants slowed down so much?
I mean, I actually think that it's because we did, and when I say we, I mean the entire outreach committee, not just the SURF team here. The outreach was just phenomenal, and everybody pitched in and helped. And I think that we got in touch with the people who were in the most dire circumstances pretty quickly. So now we're seeing like the pace of new applications slowing a little bit. But I think that's a reflection of the government benefits kicking in simultaneously. And that $600 a week, you know, as Melissa mentioned, some people are actually better off right now because that extra $600 a week.
Okay. So another question that was asked, and I'll try to paraphrase to just for a time, as a set of time, because the statement was made that Princeton Children's Fund chose Princeton Human Services as their partner. That the question is, who has ultimate accountability for how the applicants and steering committee are treated? And if someone were to, what, if there was to be negligence, who would be liable?
So we are an independent 501(c)(3) run by volunteers. And I mean, we, we try really hard to, to bring our best every day. I just can't imagine where there would be a negligent situation. I mean, it's such a random question. We, we have multiple people involved in the process. I mean, at the end of the day, Princeton Children's Fund is ultimately responsible. We're the founder of SURF, we're the lead organization, we're the fiscal agent. But gosh, I'd be stunned to hear that there was negligence, because I know what's going into it.
Okay. Next question. Given the, given that we face emergency situation, it's important to get applicants quick decisions. The question is, and you may have already, I believe you may have answered this already in your presentation, how many applications currently are more than two calendar weeks old without a decision? What the reason is for this, and without disclosing applicant names? And in case of emergency situations, is there an accelerated process for resolving cases that are older than two weeks?
Melissa, can you take this question?
Yes. So so for the question regarding how many applications are currently more than two weeks, I would, we would have to get back to you with those exact numbers. And then the reasons I went over previously, a lot of the times it's just waiting for the bill. So the applicant has notified us that they need, you know, assistance with PSCNG or NJ American Water. And it's just sitting and waiting for the bill to come in so that we have the account number and we have how much is needed to be paid.
Yeah, I almost think that that question, it's not relevant for what we're doing because everything is timed on bills, right? So if your application, you could submit a renewal application, you know, for July, but you're not going to have any of those bills until probably this time in June. So an application could in theory sit there for a month just waiting for the bills to show up with it. It's not really a relevant question in the same way it would be if, if we weren't waiting for utility bills. Like if we were only paying rent, for example, this would be a good question. Like, how long does it take you to get a rent check out? But because the utilities are timed based on the utilities' calendars, not hours, we're beholden to them for when applicants get the materials they can send to us.
Thank you. That's good.
So, and I believe you also answered this one in your presentation, but perhaps, I don't know if it needs more detail. Does SURF take into account how massively delayed unemployment benefits have been?
That's actually a great question.
Let's let Melissa take that.
Yeah. So we, that's definitely a, something that we take into consideration. And it's something that we had to also adapt in our process because when the SURF was first created, that was when the rush of unemployment applications were being submitted. So all of us thought that people were going to be receiving their unemployment benefits in a timely manner. When we saw how delayed the unemployment process actually is, we then decided to open up the process to unemployment, to applicants that are either, have applied to unemployment or are receiving unemployment. Because we understand that just because you're receiving unemployment, you're not receiving the 100% of funds that you were previously making. At this time, what we've been seeing, we've heard a lot about the $600 a week federal subsidy. We haven't started seeing that until most recently. So a lot of the, the individuals who are receiving the unemployment benefits are starting to receive the additional 600 federal subsidy per week. So those cases, we are not considering.
Thank you, Melissa. Another question that I see here, and I'm not sure who wants to take this one, is why has only one-third of the funds raised been distributed when there is so much unmet need?
I think that was explained and answered in the presentation, that people are submitting documentation, that they have anticipated use of these funds over 12, in the next 12 weeks. And so I believe that that was thoroughly answered in the presentation.
And I want to reiterate that we are not deciding what funds should be paid for an applicant. They are deciding what bills, expenses they need paid. So it really comes down to that.
Thank you, Melissa.
I'm trying, if there's other questions, I'm trying to, because some of them, I'm not sure whether it's a question or a statement. So yeah, again, I'm not sure, for example, payments can be made by bank transfer, PayPal. yeah, again, I'm not sure, for example, payments can be made by bank transfer, PayPal, cell, and other means. So is this fun using paper checks to make the payments?
So we have used a combination of checks, ACH payments. There are a lot of hidden fees built into any of the other payment methods, which, as I mentioned in the presentation, we're trying to avoid because it just seems really wasteful, donor dollars, to spend it on PayPal fees. And the utility companies charge you extra to not, to, to use one of those convenient methods. So each applicant's bill becomes larger if you try and, and do it electronically.
Okay. Thank you. But I tried to go through the questions that were in the Q and A. And like I said, some of them, I wasn't sure if there were statements, but if they can be posed
There's one.
In the form of a question?
There's one about the rental assistance. Usually takes one to two weeks. Case managers are responsible to guide the applicants. The process is slow compared to a normal rental assistance application. Can anyone take, can you take that, Melissa?
Yes. So like I previously explained, many of, the majority of the applications are also requesting utility payments on top of the rental assistance. So it's really the utility payments and waiting for the bills that delays the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to a couple of the questions that were mailed in because I'm, I can't, it's not clear whether there's any questions that haven't been addressed. So this one that was mailed in was whether, and I think you also may have addressed it because we don't know how long this crisis is, what, you know, whether it's going to be a few more months, a year or more. But let's say you continue raising funds. Is this project meant to be a short-term project as originally intended in response to COVID-19 crisis? Or will it devolve into a standing assistance fund? And this is a two-part question. What would be the use of any leftover funds collected for the original purpose, which currently amount to about three quarters of the money raised?
I'm sorry. I.
Did I repeat it?
Just one piece at a time.
Okay.
Okay.
Is this project meant to be a short-term project as originally implied in response to the COVID-19 crisis? Or will it devolve into a standing assistance fund?
So from Princeton Children's Fund perspective, we are a short-term partner. And I mean, if there's an epidemiologist out there that wants to answer when the duration is going to be over, I would appreciate knowing. But our, our intention is to remain involved through the end of the pandemic in New Jersey.
Okay. And with that said, the second part, what would be the use of any leftover funds collected for the original purpose, which currently amount to about three quarters of the money raised?
That's a great question, and I have no idea. Yeah, I mean, it's one of these problems that I, I just can't imagine we're going to have. It would be a great problem to have. And we have a Housing Stability Coalition that's been around for four years. So we would certainly have some conversations with them and probably donors and get a sense of what, what they wanted.
I think that question is asking you to kind of predict the future.
Right.
The worldwide pandemic that could really go on, we're being told for up to another year. So I think the funds, this process is probably going to last over the rest of the, the next 12 months. So we're not sure at that point what funds are going to be left. But 501(c)(3) guidelines clearly direct how those funds would have to be used and managed.
But again, because, you know, we cannot predict, we cannot predict, you know, how long this is going to be going on. We cannot predict, which I hope there will be more generous donors that, you know, we, that's something that this pandemic has actually demonstrated is that especially when there's a great need on our community, there's also many in our community, the majority in our community, who are, who want to help others, who, members of our community who are in need. So they're recognizing that. So, and, and I just wanted to comment, perhaps this would be a situation where you would want to have something in writing identifying what, what, you know, what, what you have, what you're going to be doing with the funds? Should, should there be a change in circumstances?
Absolutely. I think that's something that we'll be looking at as we're moving forward with this process.
So the other question that I have, other than Princeton Community Housing, which is a member of SURF, is there any consideration being taken to include the other providers of affordable housing units into a similar collaboration? So that a similar offer of a 50% reduction in rent can be extended to all, all of those who qualify, including input from the Affordable Housing Board? For example, you know, as an example.
Melissa, I'm punting that one to you since you know all the Princeton Housing Authority stuff.
Yes. Yes. So Felicia has been great at reaching out to the landlords of not only private landlords, but also affordable housing neighborhoods to participate in the landlord sharing agreement. So at this time, we are participating in a landlord sharing agreement with Princeton Community Housing, Merwick Stanworth. And Princeton Housing Authority is doing a rent reduction. So it's not exactly the 50%, but they are reducing their, their tenants' rents. We also have Hillier Properties who has reduced their tenants' rents at 20%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's one question that I want to respond to that's come up is, is there an accounting for taxpayers of all the municipal labor being used by PCF for SURF? Actually, Melissa's time and Human Services' time is not being used for PCF. It's being used to assist the residents of the municipality of Princeton. And so that's all what her time is being used for, not to serve SURF. I mean, not to serve PCF, but to serve the residents of the municipality of Princeton. That's the, this is the goal of the Human Services Department.
Right. Just to piggyback off of that, this is the Human Services. But we are in an emergency and in a crisis, so it's not typically at this magnitude. But we have always done this similar to the Griggs Farm Fire and to other emergencies as well.
You're an emergency responsive department. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. One question that I think it is a good question myself. And I'm not sure if you answered it in your presentation, addressed it in your presentation. If someone is denied, is there an appeal process?
That's a good question. So they can of course reach out to, back, reach back out to us to ask exactly why they were denied and have that re-explained to them. Sometimes there are certain, certain situations where enough information was not provided. So we do reopen the case. In the event that they do not qualify for one of the criteria, then we do stick by our denial. But anyone, I did see the question, if they would like to, if, if they can take it to the Civil Rights Commission, of course. Any single person that feels that it's a civil rights case is more than welcome to send it to the Civil Rights Commission.
Which is where I actually, I, I'm also liaison to the Civil Rights Commission, which is actually something that I would have to ask our administrator and perhaps even our legal counsel because right now the Civil Rights Commission, this is not respond to any, whether any raised complaints or concerns regarding a municipal department. So Human Services is a municipal department.
Yeah. Although I kind of feel like this is Princeton Children's Fund here. You know, we're the, we're the responsible organization. And I mean, we don't really have a denial process like that. It's, it's based on criteria. I mean, it's not an interpretation. It's, do you live in Princeton? Do you not live in Princeton? You can't feel that. It's a fact.
But if someone, we can't deny if someone feels that, that they were denied because of whether it was one of their protected classes. You know, we, it's not for us to say that, that they don't have, if that's how they feel, we can't say that. It's not a valid concern. So there are, and that's something that, you know, whether the Civil Rights Commission or others can address. But that's something that I would need to clarify because as I said before, Human Services Department does have a significant role in this program. And so we need to, to ensure that because of the role of the Human Services Department as a municipality, we need to be able to address the concerns of every member of our community. And I should say, including those, I, I want to acknowledge, you know, every, everyone that is working on this program, that I know are spending countless hours on this. And, and even those who are, have posed these questions. We have some community leaders, those who are involved in our community, who are looking out for the needs of our community and know what those needs are. And we value that. So we value the partnership, partnership of the organizations that have stepped up to work on this. But we also value every individual who is looking out for their neighbor.
I also want to add, I've been the department head for the municipality of Princeton for almost 20 years. And if anybody under the departments that I oversee, which is Affordable Housing, Human Services, and Corner House, anyone feels they've been treated unfairly or has a complaint, my process for the last 20 years is, please give me a call. I'll be happy to sit down with you, discuss your concerns, and make sure we find a resolution that could meet the needs of that individual. That is an ongoing practice as a department head. And I would continue to take that on even in this process. So if anyone has any concerns or anyone feels mistreated, please contact me directly at gdeblasio@princetonnj.gov. Or you can reach me at 609-924-8018. And I will be happy to sit down and find a resolution, Councilwoman.
And, and also in addition to that, the municipality does have a process in place when someone feels that they, if they have questions or feels that they perhaps were not treated fairly by, by one of our departments or, or staff, that there is a process in place where they can go, our affirmative action officer, who even though the Civil Rights Commission does not deal with concerns raised by a municipal department of staff, that we do have an affirmative action officer. So it's not that we're not, you know, we want to address your concerns, but do it in, in the, in the right way, you know, and there is a, like I said, there's a process in place.
So we have about two minutes, yeah, we have about two minutes left. I want to thank Felicia and Melissa and Councilwoman Fraga and Ross and Mark for being part of the panel this evening. I want to thank you guys for an outstanding presentation. Although they weren't, there were many comments in the question and answer about people saying what a great presentation it was, and they thank you. So we thank you for your hard work. I know you're working 24/7. And I know your goal is to continue providing outstanding service for the, you know, the community of Princeton. So I want to thank everyone who joined us. We had about 60 people at our max. We have about 53 people now. But I want to thank you all for being part of this process. And please know we will continue to try to improve it as it goes along, which is all of our goal. So with that, I think we are going to end this meeting. And Councilwoman Fraga, did you have any last comment?
No, just thank you, everyone. And to everyone that's attending, like I said, this will be, the recording will be made available. And I want to thank everyone that took the time to join. And also, please be well and stay safe and reach out if you need assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.